Testing, one, two, three. It's like work. I'm Demir Jones, I'm ready to go when you are.
Good evening. I'd like to call the city council meeting for the city of Missoula to order. It's October 23rd, 2023. If you would please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Marty, if you could do roll call for attendants, please.
I would be happy to. Anderson.
Present.
Basara. Mirto Basara. So she's absent. Daniel Carlino.
Present.
John Contos.
Here.
Sarah Farmer.
Present.
Gwen Jones.
Present.
Kristen Jordan.
Present.
Mike Nugent.
Present.
Jennifer Savage.
Present.
Emma Sherrill.
Present.
Sandra Vasika.
Present.
Heidi West.
Present.
Okay, that looks like we have 11 council members in attendance. Mayor Hess is absent. We have a call.
And Ms. Basara just walked in, so she is also present. We have minutes.
Thank you.
We have minutes from September 25th and October 2nd, 2023, to approve. Were there any changes to those minutes? All right, seeing none, those will stand approved. And we will take public comment on items not on the agenda. If anyone in the public wants to provide comment on items not on the agenda, please come up to the microphone. And if you can state your name and spell your last name, that is greatly appreciated by the people who do the minutes. And I'll set a timer for three minutes. We try and keep it to three minutes.
Good evening. You're a little hard to hear.
I'm gonna talk louder then.
All right.
All right. Mr. Wilkins.
I am John Wilkins. I retired in Ward Four for 50 years. I ran the Lewis and Clark Neighborhood Council for 50 years.
Point of order. The folks in the virtual audience can't hear Mr. Wilkins.
The mic is turned on. The blue button is up.
Okay, I lost all.
Okay, you don't need to hit it on now?
Just, we'll just wait a second. We are doing new technology over the last few weeks, and it takes a while. We're working through it, so hang on, just.
Okay, I'll start over real quick. My name is John Wilkins.
Well, hang, hang on, because the, the sound isn't getting out to the rest of the world, so.
The rest of the world.
Hang on, I'll tell you when to go, okay? Sorry about that. But good to see you down here.
What's that?
I said, sorry about that, but it's good to see you down in chambers.
Thank you. I've kinda missed this place, tell the truth.
None of these days is gonna roll out smoothly.
Not yet.
If I sit down, I'll probably never get up.
Got it. If you need help, just throw something.
I will. I've been done with throwing a leg in here.
Good. It does make me think things like the paneling. Should be reinforced paneling.
Got my stick.
It might take a few minutes, sorry. We're working through it.
Maybe I will sit down.
We'll let you know when we have it working. We could draw straws. Or we could cancel the meeting. Just if Jordan was gone and I was gone and you were gone, who would be next in line to run the meeting? Probably head of LUP is what I would say. Or another chair. Yeah, I could do that. Well, we could do it on the back of order. Absolutely. I don't know. I thought they did a bunch of work on it. I don't know. Okay, I'm just gonna call us back into order. We didn't technically recess, but we're back. If you can just try and speak loudly and clearly into the microphone, that would be great. So, go ahead and start over, Mr. Wilkins.
All right, I'll start over. Council members and Glenn, President. My name is John Wilkins. I live in Ward Four. I've lived there for 50 years. I ran Lewis and Clark Neighborhood Council for, I don't know, six, seven years. I was on this council for 12 years. But I go back to Lewis and Clark Council. We raised money to put bridges in so people could walk in that park. We raised money to put a nice round sink for wheelchairs that can travel that part. And most of all, we raised money to put a, a place in for teachers to teach kids. Kids come from there to, to that park, from Lewis and Clark School, Russell School, Washington School, for different types of meetings. Right now, I wouldn't let my kid go to that park. We got campers on one side of that park on 34th Street, which is the only area that a wheelchair can get into that park. We got eight campers plus a big bus. And the school bus is, it looks like a regular school bus. People are worried about that. I wanna see us put no camping signs alongside that park, because that's what school kids and stuff use that park tremendously. And it's a shame what's going on there. The first camper has furniture and stuff out halfway out on the sidewalk and sometime all the way out on the sidewalk. I ride a motor scooter to get around, like a wheelchair. You couldn't get by that, to get to, to get to that park. There's gotta be a cleanup. That particular camper does not run, it will not run. It has to be towed out of there. It runs a generator. There's one, two, the third camper runs a generator. Four or five campers run the generator. So that noise influences that park too, which is supposed to be a natural habitat. So please, council members, write an ordinance that there's no camping along that park. We have kids that go there, I'm concerned for the kids. And I'm concerned the way that park is starting to look. It's really deplorable after all the money and the work and the effort that the Lewis and Clark Neighborhood has done. And not only the Lewis and Clark Neighborhood, but a lot of people throughout the city have contributed to that park. And we, we can't use it the way the campers are sitting there. And I have a heart for people that are homeless, you know, and I know we have this ordinance, but there's other places better than this for people to camp out. And the way I find it, I've talked to a lot of these people, and they, they're not interested in shelters. They're not interested in anything except living in their camper by that park. And we need to do something about it. So please, pass an ordinance or something so we can put a sign up saying, "No camping at the Duck Pond, Bancroft Pond." And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Anyone else that would like to make public comment?
Oh, I, I do have pictures on my phone if anybody wants to see them.
Okay, thank you.
John Ulrich, Ward Four. I was by that park a little while ago, it's cleaned up. The bus is the only thing that remains. I watch it very closely because that council person right there started the attack from the city on me when I lived in a motorhome. That council person right there. Yeah, point of order. Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Ulrich, let's just, tell us what you want to talk about tonight and let us know.
Yeah, so I'm here because for five years now, I've had a block, a mute, on my First Amendment rights. When's it gonna be removed? When's it gonna be removed? For five years.
Just direct your comments to me and tell us what you want to say.
To you? Why, you're not gonna do anything about it?
Because I'm the presiding officer, Mr. Ulrich.
I'll tell you what's gonna happen. So, it's gonna get removed. And my, my comments are gonna be pushed through to everyone that can hear them, because I have a right to speak just as much as that man or anybody else that comes up to this podium, okay? I have a right to email people in the city. Government, my government. You have no right to tell me, "No, I can't communicate with anybody in this, in this city government." And to say, "He started it," saying, "The violent man." "The violent man," you know how that has carried my reputation? You got any evidence, any paperwork, anywhere that says I've done anything violent ever? No. But that doesn't matter, because Ryan Sudbury and Susan Eberth first had the Missoulian publish an article that said I was horribly violent to anybody that called the police on me. A lie, a lie that haunts me today. Why? Because I'm taking care of my mother. And the conservator's like, "Oh my God, he's so mean and violent. There's published articles in the paper about it." So your slander and defamation is fucking up my life.
Mr. Ulrich, thank you. All right, let's move on. Anyone else that wants to provide public comment tonight? Come on up. State your name, and if you could spell your last name, I'd appreciate it.
Doug Stewart, S.T.E.W.A.R.T.
Thank you.
And I was here before the other Doug Stewart that started the recycling center.
Okay, hey.
I, uh, I'm here on behalf of my daughter and son-in-law, who live at 1815 Arlington Street, intersection of Cypress Court and Lux off of 39th. My concern is over the last basically 20 years on this street, there's been a street water drainage problem because of the neglect of storm drains being plugged and causing immense amount of water to flow across the street from the corner of 1820 Arlington and Cypress Court to 1815 Arlington. It's caused the advancement of sidewalk crumbling. Just my 19-year-old grandson, at age of three or four years, could skate up and down this sidewalk clear to the corner of Lux and Arlington without any problems. There are four drains in this basic intersection of Cypress Court, Lux and Arlington, all within 200 feet of each other. And much of the time, they don't work correctly and never have. Unfortunately, this neighborhood has been ignored for years, allowing the streets to extremely deteriorate, the street surface literally breaking into small sections. These homeowners had paid taxes all these years and hadn't received the city service they deserved by them. Just the last couple of months, the city street department came in and put a Band-Aid surface over the top of all the broken asphalt, which I questioned holding up over time. I called the city street super foreman several years ago about the terrible damage, drainage issues and the streets. He said he was aware of the problem and needed to fix those storm drains before the street would be repaired. Well, that didn't happen, as now they'll have to tear a lot of street up to fix the storm drain issues. They looked at the busted sidewalk and of course knew about the drainage issues as they have to pump them every time it rains. Hmm, wonder how much that has cost the city over the last 20 years because it's been that bad for that long. The water in the corner at the, at 1820 Arlington and Cypress Court gets about one foot of water deep, and the water has to, has had to run across the street down in front of 1815 for years. The result of this had found a weak spot where apparently the sewer was either hooked up or whatever in 1993. And this spot has had thousands of gallons of runoff water hitting that area for the years. My kids have lived at 1815 Arlington. Kids from down the block would come up off and on for several days and ride their bikes through the deep water, the storm drains in front of 1820 Arlington. In the last several weeks, there was a rainstorm so bad that the water even covered the sidewalk and went up the driveway at 1820 Arlington. That residence, like others, had a mailbox mounted in the concrete sidewalk so the mailman could drive up close. Well, a substitute driver came that day, and the water was so deep, he tried to drop Ivo on the sidewalk so he wouldn't get his feet wet. He ended up driving into the mailbox, breaking the post out of the concrete. When the regular man came the next day, she asked when they were going to fix her mailbox. The driver told her, "Oh, that's the residence problem, as we won't fix it." So her mailbox and post is tied to the closest tree to where the mailbox was. Some folks moved into the house at the corner Lux and Arlington and happened to have, some had contact with city and complained about a broken sidewalk that we would try and be repaired for a long time. Ultimately, the city sent someone out to look it again. And I sent, my kids a letter. We're requiring them to have the sidewalk fixed within 30 days or the city would do it, and then the kids would have to pay for it. My daughter talked with the party and said it's the homeowner's responsibility on sewer line issues, even though the drains probably have caused more damage. Well, why did the city inspectors require, why didn't the city inspectors require it done properly? Also, why didn't the city get a hold of my kids and let them know they should get it fixed if the city was going to deny any liability? And they said nothing. The guy that originally came out basically knew that they had some liability for excess water because of the storm drains that have been neglected for many years. We have videos and pictures of many times of excess water flowing across the street and trying to go down the gutters on the opposite side. Videos of water streaming down the apparent cavity at the broken sidewalk.
So, Mr. Stewart, we're past four minutes, and it sounds like you've got a lot more. I would ask that maybe you reach out to your city councilors.
I'm sorry, I'm.
I would ask that maybe you reach out to your city councilors who can follow up on this item with Public Works, because.
There've been a very small amount right next to the sidewalk, but you can Google pictures from 2008 to 2015 to show the progress of the damage. But they're ignoring the residents in that area and have a long time. The water gets extremely deep down there. And they've pumped it, two or three guys come out every time it rains and sometimes in between, because the sump pumps in those don't work.
Okay.
And it's been a terrible issue, so. Thank you for your time. I would appreciate there'd be some consideration. Here, my kids are looking at maybe $8,000 to $15,000 to repair something that could have been taken care of a long time ago and not become an issue.
Appreciate it.
Thank you kindly.
If you want to contact your city councilors, I'm sure they can follow up on this. Anyone else that wants to provide public comment on items not on the agenda tonight? Good evening. Just state your name and spell your last name, please.
Delon Bryant. I was here before. I understand the semi outcry and the disregard and the misconception about the homeless. I am homeless. I think that the way to feel, I think the way to solve the issue is to try to see if we can all come to collaboration and come up with a plan properly. Shelters are getting over full. Pretty soon winter's gonna be here. And there's not gonna be nowhere for anyone to sleep besides in front of you guys' place and these gentlemen and ladies in the audience. And that's not fair to them, because they, they pay for their property, just like I would pay for mine if I had my own property. Something has to be done properly and correctly. It's, I've been reaching out to, to housing places, trying to get assistance for housing and giving information to individuals at the shelter how to do that. If somebody from the city council can actually help the Thunderbird out, the Thunderbird is built for us. The guy's mom and the guy both said to me personally, because I was renting from them, that they need assistance to try to allow us to stay there again. We got a grant or something like that. That would help. I'm trying to gather money up to, for myself, to stay there. I'm, my model is, the shelter is a transitional place. It's not meant for us to have to stay four or five years just due to the housing crisis. In order to solve the issue, we have to figure something out properly. I understand it's, it's dealing with cash, I get it. But it's also dealing with lives and also dealing with staff. And you wonderful people that sit on the cabinet and people that are in the audience. We need to figure out something. So then you don't have campers. So you don't have property owners complaining about motorhomes or trailers or bikes being turned into homes on, on their property or across the street from their property. It's not fair to them, it's not fair to us, because there's nowhere for us to go. We can't camp out in front of the courthouse, because it's you guys' safety. So somebody, we all need to be safe. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ryan. Anyone else? Line up. Good evening.
Robert Dunlop, 2316 West Kent, Missoula. I think overall, the candidates that we currently have running for office are qualified. And I also believe that their intent is to be honest. I also think that about all of you folks. But there is a comment that I've heard from current Mayor Hess and from members of this council. And now it's filtering down to some of the candidates. And it goes something like this. Until we can tax the tourists or until the tourists start picking up their share of the burden, maybe we can do something about property taxes. So for those of you that either weren't in Montana or here in Missoula, let's review this situation. First of all. First of all, where do you think that the wind gates, the Ramada ends, the Holiday ends, get their money to pay their taxes? And their taxes are a lot more than what I pay on my little house? Now, going back, if you sent off to the state of Montana prior to nineteen eighty-seven and asked for information about this state, either through the Department of Commerce or the Highway Department, you would be lucky if you got a roadmap. Come nineteen eighty-eight, that current legislature and Governor Schwenden passed the tourist tax, bed tax, whatever you want to call it, four percent. Part of it to go to the university system, one percent of that to go to historic preservation and three percent, almost three percent for tourist information. Now, you could get a roadmap and you could get leaflets about the state, things to see them do. Moving up to Governor Roscoe, the best tax is the one that somebody else pays. There come, I won't call it a ground swell, but the historic preservation people, let's buy Virginia City, let's buy Nevada City. Where do you think that money came from? Roscoe leaned on the Department of Commerce. That's where the money came from. The tourists bought you that place. Now move up, the gentleman in the back may recall this. No. Then we come to Governor March. And there's a budget shortfall. So the bed tax is four percent. We've got to balance the state budget. The best tax is the tax somebody else has to pay. Momo. Now the bed tax is seven percent. She has three percent tacked on and it goes directly to the state general fund.
We're past three minutes and it sounds like you've got a lot more governors.
Okay.
I know.
Yes, we do.
We're just at March.
But they come to the Missoula City Council. Some chambers of commerce come along and said, we need more money to promote the city of Missoula. So the city council allowed them to tack on another three percent. So when you get your motel room here, don't tell me the tax the visitors aren't paying. Clean up your act if you're a candidate. Tell the truth, the whole truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlop. Anyone else that wants to provide public comment on items not on the agenda? All right, let me see. I don't think we have anyone online raising their hand. Mr. Spitzmacher? Come on up.
Yes, you can call me Big K Low Life of Montana, thanks to the Pavarello and a few other those where the hateful gets respected, especially the staff. Her name is Abby. I come into the Pavarello five minutes before the hour to eat. She throws me a couple of sandwiches like a dog. Why don't they shut off the eating at quarter to one instead of one o'clock? I've seen somebody choke down their food like I've seen the Sowls raviness at my dad's pig trough. It's quite a sight. He was shoveling it down because Abby don't care. She's inhumane.
Mr. Spitzmacher, just address your comments to me. Go ahead.
The entire council.
No, per our rules, it's to the presiding officer, Mr. Spitzmacher. But go ahead, just tell us what you want to tell us tonight.
And bring back the memories how the staff, specifically March, right from the two of them below Ms., um, what's her name? The director doesn't come to my mind. Puts me out because I am not regarding the staff that advocates the hateful March seventeenth. Three of them. As of late, I'm called something that's very vile. And one of the councilmen, council gals heard it Wednesday. It's threatening. The advocacy of the hateful, of the Pavarello in regards to management. I wish one of the directors of the Pavarello, which would be Mayor Hess, was here to address the circumstances, how we embrace the drug addiction. I seen a young man in front of the courthouse the other day. He was having a long bottle with a drink in it, in a paper bag. He must have had something else because he's been up the last two nights with big pupils walking the floor of the Pavarello. And the staff advocates it. And he specifically said directly, I don't give a hoot about the city council or anything else. And that is the attitude, I feel, of the staff, of others, of the Pavarello. They need some specific directive and oversight.
Thank you, Mr. Spitzmacher. Anyone else? Mr. Moore?
Excuse me, my name is Bob Moore, M-O-O-R-E. I have several issues, but I'm only going to get to a couple, I guess. I think you ought to pass a law that anybody running for mayor or city council has to, if they say, we're, I'm going to solve the traffic problem or I'm going to solve the property tax problem or some other problem, that the law says, you got to tell us how. You don't get any votes as long as you just sit there on TV or forums or whatever you had and saying you're going to do so and so. How are you going to do it? Second, if you know how to do it, why haven't you already done it? If you can solve the property taxes, why haven't you already done it? I would like for my taxes to be lower. So pass that law tonight, it would be okay. Then, uh, the MRA has put out a brochure that says when blight is identified, they create a part of the division and fixes it. Totally false. Why do you allow your staff members to state things like that? Some people have said, you really don't understand TIF and all that stuff. I got another suggestion. Have a half-hour forum and me and Helen can discuss what TIF is and how it is good or how it is bad. Is it good or is it bad? I'd be glad to have, it must make the whole afternoon. Perhaps with the mayor to see what, what TIF is actually doing. In fact, make out a law that you have to understand TIF. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else that wants to provide public comment? Okay, nobody is online raising their hand. Seeing none, oh. Come on up, Mr. Shea. Three minutes, please.
Clayton Shea, S-H-A-Y-A. I'm a little disappointed to see that Mr. Hess is on this this evening. I had quite a few things that I wanted to address to him.
Governor, Mr. Shea, could you pull that microphone a little closer to your mouth? The folks in the virtual audience can't hear you at all. Thank you.
We wouldn't want them to miss out. Yeah, I, you know, I do the math at about a month and a half now that I've been waiting for any kind of response from our lame duck mayor. Granted, it only took me from February till September to get him to sit down and answer, even the ability to have a chance to speak to him. But I find that this dragging our feet, from what I see, we're going to drag our feet again and postpone until December? So that we sit out there wondering what our fate is for yet another month or so? It's not long enough just to wait until after the election and not have to worry about these things through that. But we're going to make everybody sit out there through the freezing cold until the holiday and then decide what we're going to do with them. I've had some pretty good interpretations and looks at the maps of the city that will basically be empowered once the camping ordinance that is being hammered out right now is, is put into place. And it's gross. It's like leaving a doghouse and that's about all. Has anybody looked at it? What it looks like when the city isn't campable within a thousand feet of a river or a park or a business or a school or anything? There's nowhere. The only thing you're coming into compliance with is this fourth amendment to your meetings where you might finally actually start listening to what people have to say with the emotion and the vehemence that they have. Actually get the point across to you here before we take it to your doorstep. I mean, I don't really see any point in the courthouse lawn. I disagree with the comment earlier that we can't camp there. I'm pretty sure I can put my kitchen there tomorrow and not be moved in protest. However, I don't know how that's the point. This isn't the county right here, this is the city. So I don't know why we're not camping at town hall. It'll be a lot more crowded. It's definitely going to be my push. I'll see you all there soon.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Anyone else that wants to provide public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will go on with our agenda. Next item is number four to announce the committee meetings. Marty, if you could go through the committee schedule for Wednesday, please.
I'd be happy to do that. Just a moment, let me share my screen so folks can follow along with me. Good evening, everybody. We're going to announce the committee meetings that city council will be holding this next week. Just a programming note for you all. Next week is the fifth Monday of the month and the city council does not meet on the fifth Monday. So no city council meeting next week. And there aren't going to be any committee meetings on the week of November first, that Wednesday. So all of our committees that I'm announcing tonight are happening this coming Wednesday, October twenty-fifth. Here we go. Public Safety, Health and Operations Committee will meet on the twenty-fifth from nine-thirty in the morning until ten AM. They're going to be taking up two collective bargaining agreements with employees here at the city to include planners and maintenance tech planners in the Community Development Planning and Innovation Office. And the maintenance technicians in the Parks and Rec Office will also be setting a public hearing on an ordinance that revises the city's records and information governance program. Committee of the whole will follow on the twenty-fifth from ten-ten in the morning until ten-thirty. They'll be hearing an update from the City County Food Policy Advisory Board. The Climate Conservation and Parks Committee follows that from ten-forty in the morning until eleven-twenty-five. They will be hearing a, about an agreement for use of the Playfair Park facilities. And finally, the Land Use and Planning Committee will meet on the twenty-fifth from eleven-thirty-five in the morning to twelve-twenty PM. And they will be taking up a phased development review for West End Homes. And as I mentioned earlier, no city council meeting next week. And there are no committees scheduled for November first.
Thank you, Marty. Next, we have the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda were approved in city council committees to be placed on the consent agenda to save time at council meetings by voting on them as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud so citizens watching on MCAT will know what's on the consent agenda and we will invite community comment on these items before we vote. Marty, if you could please read the consent agenda.
I'd be happy to. Hang on just a second, let me share my screen. Same story as before, I want folks to be able to read while I talk. Tonight's consent agenda, folks, has eight items. The first is to approve accounts payable. We call them claims here at the city for checks dated tomorrow, October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. They amount to one million, one hundred six thousand, nine hundred two dollars and eighty-nine cents. The second item, let me scroll up here just a little bit, is to confirm the mayor's appointment of Brett Bell to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board for a term beginning immediately and expiring on September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six. Number three is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with Missoula County for the South Avenue State Streets Grant Project. I almost turned into a tongue twister. Number four is to authorize the mayor to sign the South Avenue State Streets Grant Agreement with the Federal Highway Administration. Number five is to approve amendment number two to the City of Missoula Master Energy Performance Contract with McKinstry Ascension LLC to include additional work, to include the city's parks and park, parks departments, aquatics facility in an amount not to exceed one million, nine hundred eighty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. Number six is to approve and authorize a contract with Climate Smart Missoula for climate action work in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars and a contract with Home Resource for climate action work in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four in the amount of fifty-one thousand dollars. Number seven is to adopt a resolution of the Missoula City Council granting Spectrum Pacific West LLC an extension of their cable franchise, cable television franchise agreement with the City of Missoula under the current terms of agreement to provide cable television services from October first to two thousand nineteen through and including November thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three, unless it's earlier renewed by the parties. And finally, number eight is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign award documents for the grant from the State Security Program, Montana Disaster and Emergency Services, and the purchase of an emergency response vehicle for our police department. Thanks, that's the consent agenda.
Thank you, Marty. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? If so, you can come up to the, to the mic and have three minutes. And I don't see anyone raising their hand. Did anyone on council want to divide the question? All right, seeing none, we will take a roll call vote on the consent agenda, Marty.
All ready on the consent agenda, Anderson?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Basika?
Yes.
In West?
Yes.
And would any of you like to change your vote? That's twelve ayes and a pass.
Thank you. We have no presentations from any councils, boards, commissions or authorities. We do have one special proclamation tonight regarding Children's Grief Awareness Month that I'll read on behalf of Mayor Jordan Hess. So whereas fifty thousand Montana youth will experience the death of a parent or sibling before their twenty-fifth birthday and whereas many kids feel misunderstood in the wake of loss, thinking that their grief is invisible to, to those around them. And whereas all bereaved youth deserve advocates supporting them as they navigate a world without their person. And whereas effective grief support can help mitigate against possible negative outcomes by fostering positive coping mechanisms and resiliency. And whereas recognizing this month serves to build a foundation of support for grieving youth, strengthening a national community of bereaved. children's grief and ensure that no child grieves alone. Therefore, Jordan Hess, Mayor of the City of Missoula, hereby recognizes the month of November 2023 as Children's Grief Awareness Month, and that's signed by Mayor Hess. And was there anyone in the audience tonight to speak specifically to this proclamation? Sometimes there are folks here. Please come on up, just state your name, please, and spell your last name.
I sure can. I'm Meg Smith, S-M-I-T-H, always funny to spell that one. I'm with Tamarack Grief Resource Center, and I just wanted to say a big thank you to you all for bringing this into your meeting and continuing to raise awareness about Children's Grief Awareness Month. We've been offering grief camps in Montana for 25 years and have seen the impact of these programs, and wish kids didn't have to grieve, but we're sure glad there are programs and support systems in place. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a good friend who has worked at those camps for quite a few years, and I know they are very valuable, so thanks for all that you do. Okay, we have two items for final consideration tonight. Items listed under final consideration have had a public hearing. The chairperson of each standing City Council Committee will make a motion, and we invite community comment on each item. The first one is 8.1, the Public Works Fee Schedule. And did we have any staff online to provide any additional information or update on the Public Works Fee Schedule, Ms. Griffin?
We do not have any updated or additional information since the public hearing last week.
Okay, thank you for that. Before making a motion, were there any questions from council on this item? Seeing none, then I will go to our Public Works Chair, Ms. Wait a minute. Is this in, Lee, is this in Budget and Finance?
We do present it in Budget and Finance.
Sorry, it is in Budget and Finance, so we'll go to the Vice President, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. No problem. All right, so first 8.1, I recommend adopting a resolution establishing the Public Works and Mobility Department Fee Schedule and related fee increases for fiscal year 2024.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comment? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, on the resolution approving the budget amendment, Basara?
Yes.
And Carleeno?
Yes.
Kontos?
No.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vaseka?
No.
West?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 10 ayes, 2 nays, and it passes.
Thank you. Second item, 8.2, fiscal year 2023, third quarter budget amendments. Ms. Griffin, did you have any additional information to provide on this item?
We did not.
And any questions from council? All right, seeing none, I will also look to Ms. Anderson for a motion, please.
Yes, all right. I make a motion to adopt a resolution for the third quarter fiscal year 2023 amendments to the annual appropriations, or budget, as we all like to call it.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Carleeno?
Yes.
Kontos?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vaseka?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 12 ayes and it passes.
Thank you. We do have one public hearing tonight. Following a staff report on this item, we invite community comment. This item is not a voting item, it's not an action item tonight, the purpose is to provide a public hearing and to hear from the public. So we have staff person Emily Harris Shears here to present on a grant opportunity for housing.
Hello, thanks for having me tonight. I'm just figuring out this.
I'm not sure, is your mic on, Emily, or can you speak?
Can you hear me?
Doesn't sound like it's on.
It's on. I think you need that one.
This is, thank you.
We swapped, and I guess it
Much better, thank you.
Didn't work. Hi, I'm Emily Harris Shears. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm the Senior Housing Policy Specialist in Community Planning, Development, and Innovation. And as Councilmember Jones said, we're here tonight to give a staff report on the pathways to removing obstacles to housing funding opportunities through HUD. And, oh, cool, there's my slide. So I'm gonna give an abbreviated version of the presentation that I gave in council and committee on the 4th for the benefit of the public, and if you're interested in seeing the full presentation, it's available on the calendar date of October 4th in the Housing and Redevelopment Committee. So we have a really cool opportunity to apply for $10 million from the Department, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and we are taking that opportunity. So tonight, I'm going to walk you through some background of the grant and then the opportunity of funding, and then what we plan to apply for, which is due next Monday. So the pathways to removing obstacles to housing, or as being known as pro-housing, is an $85 million competitive grant opportunity for communities to identify and remove barriers to affordable housing production and preservation. The range of awards is $1 million to $10 million as a maximum, and there's a six-year period of performance. Cities and local governments and state governments, metropolitan planning organizations, and multi-jurisdictional entities are eligible to apply. And the housing, the pro-housing grant is using the Community Development Block Grant statutory framework, which we are familiar with as an entitlement city. The Community Development Block Grant uses a national objective, and this award opportunity aligns with that, which is to benefit people with low and moderate incomes, in this instance for people earning below 100% of the area median income, preventing or eliminating blight or slums, and then meeting any other community development needs that have particular urgency. We don't currently have a waiver for any of those, so we're really focused on benefiting people with low and moderate incomes and preventing or eliminating blight. So the framing around this award opportunity from HUD is to, they're looking for sound approaches that knock down barriers to affordable housing. And there are several eligible activities. Some examples are planning and policy, development, infrastructure, and preservation, and activities that carry out regular responsibilities of government or that result in any downzoning are not eligible. And downzoning just means that the amount of housing that's allowed there is reduced as a result of the activity, which we don't want to do. And then there HUD is prioritizing awards from applicants that demonstrate progress and a commitment to overcoming local barriers, and to facilitating the increase in affordable housing production and also the preservation of existing housing, and also in communities that have an acute demand for housing for households below 100% AMI, area median income. So the timeline, we're in October now, tonight is our public hearing, and then our application is due by Monday, and we are set and ready to apply. So the city's project, application is focusing on preventing displacement, and we're planning to do that through two main strategies, which is addressing supply and addressing policy and programming. Under supply, we intend to create incentives for new development, strengthen our acquisition and disposition of land practices and processes, to do limited equity co-op conversions, and then to also strengthen resident-owned community conversions. There already an operating model that works really well, but they often limit, are limited because of funding. And then policy and programming in that vein, we're planning to focus on housing access and retention for people who experience systemic racism and oppression, fair housing education, language services, creating a landlord liaison program, creating and making available renter-facing tools, and we're also exploring a conversation with the Missoula Tenants Union to support their work around right to council for people facing evictions. So we are focusing on preventing displacement through planning and programming because of data and information that we have over the last several years of implementing our housing policy, A Place to Call Home, and that includes understanding that there are redevelopment pressures that are impacting residents with low and moderate incomes. We're seeing that through the sale and acquisition of mobile home parks, we're seeing that through the sale of naturally occurring affordable housing that's being redeveloped into things that are unaffordable. We've also, we did last year a about 10-month-long listening session with community members around rental factors and what they were facing related to displacement. We learned a lot through that outreach, and particularly, we learned that there's a stronger need for landlord engagement and education in our community. We also have identified through data, and both qualitative and quantitative data, racial disproportionality and experiences of houselessness in homeownership and in cost burden, and then also the recent request from the International Rescue Committee to pause on receiving new arrivals due to the acute housing shortage, and then just our overarching fair housing education needs that were highlighted through the displacement work, and we continue to talk to residents who need support, particularly for people who are newly arrived or arriving, people experiencing systemic racism, people with disabilities, and people who are experiencing houselessness. And then in the supply area, where we know that we need to focus on preventing displacement through supply because of our legislative and legal contexts, preemptions in the state of Montana prohibit us from creating policy that proactively protects residents, and so we need to do that through programming and through creating new supply. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund has created a foundation for funding innovative solutions like limited equity co-ops and supporting prevention through resident-owned communities, but we need more funding to be able to do that and protect what's existing and also acquire new stock. We also need funding to test incentive approaches to engage the public sector and owners and developers, and what are those packages of incentives that spark a curiosity to sell to a nonprofit organization and make less profit but do some really profound community good. And then we also know that we hear from, during the budget process for fiscal year 2024, we worked with partners, nonprofit partners, and completed a budget exercise to forecast projects in need, and our partners came up with $3.2 million in projects that they would be able to get started on right away if the Affordable Housing Trust Fund was adequately funded. So we know that we have the capacity in our community to spend this funding through our nonprofit partners. I've been talking really fast, so I needed a sip of water, excuse me. We also know, we are planning to, under programming, we're planning to create in partnership with the community, a landlord-tenant liaison program. We don't anticipate that the city would operate that, but would be a part of the development work with the community and then hold the contract for that as the award recipient from HUD. We expect that the landlord liaison program will focus on incentivizing voucher utilization, supporting application process transparency, and mediating and resolving conflict. And then we also expect to create strategies that reduce barriers for households who are impacted by systemic racism, and we expect that to look like landlord-facing education, fair housing education, language access, and the application we propose, a city, like, facilitated language line contract that partners who opt in and commit to doing the programming that we want to see that promotes housing access can use this language line, and we pay the bill. That is one of the concerns we heard a lot, especially from community members who are newly arrived, and we know that 5.1% of Missoulians speak a language other than English at home, and we don't really have, you know, strategies. We know organizations do a great job of that, but it is something that is expensive and hard for organizations to do on their own. And then we also hope to do more resident-facing education, and then doing the exploration with the Missoula Tenants Union and the Montana Legal Services who they're working with around right to council. And then for supply, we recommend, or we propose, that we will strengthen our land acquisition and disposition approaches, building on the city's land banking strategy, create a structure and utilize existing methods to fairly acquire and dispose of land for projects, and in the spirit of creating more housing that's affordable for Missoulians. Then we also propose doing more hybrid community land trust or limited equity co-ops. This is a newly emerging approach in Missoula, it's the first of its kind in the state, and they've done two so far, but we'd like to see what the opportunity is to build and scale that model and engage owners and residents in solutions. And then we also like to expand the opportunities for resident-owned community conversions. As I mentioned, that's a really well-established program, it's just expensive, and we know that it is something that aligns with our housing policy goals. And then we also will create an expiring preservation fund, which will protect federal and local investments as they're nearing their end of their periods of affordability. It will also allow and ensure that projects that have investment are livable and habitable and have updates and improvements. The Creekside Project is a great example of that, and the Bridge Apartments are also examples of where we've intervened with funding that we would like to be able to scale and do more of in our community. And just a note that we anticipate, we are expecting sales of land from, for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund revenue, and the way that we would operate those is that revenue that's received to the trust fund would be prioritized for our other priorities of building and new construction, while we have this funding to really kind of establish our procedures and all of those things for the next six years. We would do that as a way to leverage both funding sources so that we can really meet all of our strategies in A Place to Call Home during this incredible opportunity. And then I just wanted to touch on how these proposal, proposed activities align to city priorities. So the proposed activities align to the Justice Equity Diversion and Inclusion Resolution that was adopted in 2021. It also aligns to both 2020 to 2023 and the 24 to 26 strategic plans under Economic Health, Community Design and Livability, and Safety and Wellness. And of course, it aligns to the city's adopted housing policy, A Place to Call Home, which calls us to align and leverage existing funding resources. And then I just wanted to touch on how these proposal, proposed activities align to city priorities. So the proposed activities align to the Justice Equity Diversion and Inclusion Resolution that was adopted in 2021. It also aligns to both 2020 to 2023 and the 24 to 26 Strategic Plans under Economic Health, Community Design and Livability, and Safety and Wellness. And of course, it aligns to the city's adopted housing policy, A Place to Call Home, which calls us to align and leverage existing funding resources to support housing, to reduce barriers to new supply and promote access to affordable homes, and to partner to create and preserve affordable housing. So we are requesting the full $10 million. We feel confident that we can get that out the door to the community in the six-year award period. We're proposing $1 million to the programming strategies for the landlord liaison program and for impacting systemic racism, $2.5 million for land acquisitions, $1.5 million for limited equity co-ops, $1.5 million for resident-owned communities, $2.1 million for the expiring preservation fund, and then $300,000 for personnel and admin. And then we, the HUD application asks applicants to identify leverage. It's not a requirement of the grant, but we were able to identify $5.1 million in leverage, which is half of our ask, and we'll do, we'll use leverage from the $1 million of Missoula Redevelopment Agency project alignment to housing that's stated in the funding resolution, $1.5 million in the sale of city-owned land, $180,000, excuse me, of 40% of my time to implement this grant project and to collaborate with the community and nonprofit partners, and then $2.4 million will be from the required match from applicants from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that will be both in-kind and cash match. But we have a 25% requirement for all applicants of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and we would extend that policy to this funding as well. And there've been several opportunities for engagement through this month. We started with a nonprofit stakeholders meeting in September to just sort of like run our initial ideas by and make sure we were on the right track. We got great feedback from that meeting and built on that. Then we came to the Housing and Redevelopment Committee in the beginning of the month. We talked through this with the members of the Affordable Housing Resident Oversight Committee on the 10th. Tonight is our public hearing, and the community is also able to view this application on Engage Missoula, which is hyperlinked in the attachment on the agenda in here. And then I want to just cover the public comment that we did receive and how we incorporated that. We received, we heard from about 12 community members, all in support of our intent to apply. And primarily, we heard from community members that just expressed, like, "You are writing this at a really high level, and I don't understand these few details. Can you explain them a little more clearly in the application?" So we did that for both Heather Harp and Frank Reed's feedback. We also received data from Bob Oaks about the Northside-Westside Neighborhood Survey that stated that 80% of survey respondents wanted to see more limited equity co-ops as a housing solution, so we incorporated that. We've been talking with the Missoula Tenants Union and included the right to counsel and included that in our narrative. We also, oh, we also shared our application with Local Housing Solutions, which is a policy partner out of NYU's Furman Center. The City of Missoula CPDI participated in their Small to Medium Cities Learning Cohort in 2022. We've maintained a relationship with them, so they provided us with some really helpful insight into our strategies, and we incorporated those as well. We also heard from another member of the community who wanted to see right to counsel in a standardized application. That's been included. We heard from Linda McCarthy from the Missoula Downtown Association, who offered support and just keep in mind opportunities to collaborate. We heard from a resident who supports mobile home communities that are resident-owned and shared that those strategies impact their family, and they're excited to see more of those opportunities. We also heard from a person who shared that they are glad we're working on this. They spent the last year experiencing houselessness, and they're currently housed, but their rent is so high that they're not really ever sure that they can pay their next month's rent. They work constantly, but it's not enough, and so they'd also like to be informed of what changes and what opportunities come available. So we incorporated that into our application, and we'll also be sure to stay connected to them. And then we also heard from Paul Herrendine from Clearwater Credit Union offering support, and we identified that most likely it will be around the limited equity partnerships if we're awarded. So that's the end of my presentation, and thanks for sitting through that again, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Lots of great information. So we already heard this in committee, and councilors asked lots of questions. We had a lot of discussion, and we can still have questions tonight, but also this is to take public comment on this item. But first, council questions? Ms. West?
So I have just one question. I spent way too much time reading the NOFO. I think I spent an entire week on it, and I guess I have a question about the City of Missoula not being a priority community for this grant, and if you feel this application is strong enough to make up the, I guess we start with a 10-point deficit on the scoring out of 100 points. Yeah, could you just talk about that?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's definitely something that we talked about a lot and whether we should still apply. We are eligible for some of the points because we can demonstrate an acute need. I did attend all of the webinars, and I did ask them, "If I can show you my own data that demonstrates the acute need, can we get the 10 points?" They told me no. But it is important to know that the data that they're using is from 2015 to 2019, and our landscape changed considerably in the last five years. So we feel confident that we've communicated our acute need in several ways, and because we, our policy in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is to serve the City of Missoula plus the five-mile radius that the Health Department covers, we actually will serve a few of the communities that are priority communities, and the way the NOFO reads is if you serve any of those, you get the points. So because we serve East Missoula, because we serve West Bonner Riverside, we are eligible for those points because we're serving into the county, which is a priority area.
Okay. Any other council questions? All right. Well, with that, then, we will open a public hearing, and we would love to hear from the public on this. So if you want to give public comment, please come up to the mic and state your name and spell your last name, please.
Hi.
Actually, let's pull, yeah, it's been a little touchy tonight, so get in close to it or pull it closer to you. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Todd Franicevic, F-R-A-N-I-C-E-V-I-C-H. I'm the Deputy Director for Habitat for Humanity. You will probably not be surprised to find out that we are absolutely and enthusiastically behind Emily pursuing this funding. The AHTF has been a giant resource to all of the nonprofits trying to affect affordable housing in this community. The numbers that I think I would reemphasize from what she said to drive the point home, in this grant, they talk about families below 100% of AMI. The reality in this community over the past few years is for a family to afford a conventional home, they have to be well above 250% of AMI. So the families that we are taking care of and the families that this is designed to aid have no other options. We are, we are all trying very hard, and there are a lot of groups that are approaching this. But the partnerships that we have with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the land trusts in the area, they have already produced results for us, and we are trying to redouble our efforts in production to hope to make a dent in the problem. But without opportunities like this, it is going to be slow-going. I ask that you advocate and support this. Our focus is on home ownership. We too would like to reduce the barriers to people to being able to afford a home for their family. And with all the other nonprofit groups in town that affect affordable housing, we are just hoping that you get behind this. These are good people. These are all good people, trying very hard. I thank you for your time. I would take any questions you have.
Thanks. You know what? For right now, we'll see if anyone else has public comment, but then if any councilors have questions, do that. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to comment tonight, please?
Hi, my name is Sherri Lee, L-E-E. I live in Ward 5. I'm just here in support for this grant application and am thankful that Emily and her team have put so much work into it.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Others who'd like to comment, please come on up.
Good evening, Madam President. Nevin Graves, G-R-A-V-E-S. I apologize for the brief update I'd come to previously as a renter in Ward 3, but now a freeholder in--
Anyone else? Come on up, Mr. Moore.
Did you say we could ask questions?
We'll have council questions afterwards if there, anyone had follow-up questions. But if you want to provide public comment right now, go ahead and provide public comment on this grant application.
I didn't get exactly what the Missoula Redevelopment Agency was commenting on there.
We can't hear Mr. Moore.
Can you get closer to that mic there? There you go. Thank you.
There was something in there about Missoula Redevelopment Agency, and my question was, explain it a little bit more to me, but if you have to wait, that's fine. However, whatever is in there that the Missoula Redevelopment Agency is doing should be taken out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else who would like to provide public comment on this grant application? Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Andrea Davis, Executive Director of Homeward, and I am here to just applaud the efforts of Emily Harris Shears and the staff of the CPDI Department. This is a wonderful opportunity for the City of Missoula to go after. It is like we are made for it. The amount of planning and efforts that we have done to date in order to be eligible for a grant of this size and scale is really a no-brainer, and it has the opportunity to reach such a vast, not only different income targets, but also home types, right? So folks that are earning 0% and living houseless and folks that have the potential to be homeowners. We are one of the nonprofits that Emily reached out to, so at Homeward, we no doubt provided some input. Be happy to continue to private, provide input on the Landlord Liaison Pilot Program that we had done for a while, if you find that helpful. And I just wanted to speak in favor of this opportunity and the vast amount of flexibility it feels it gives us as a community is very important. I would also reiterate what's already been said. The right to counsel is something that, I was just speaking with somebody today that had experienced an eviction and since that time, unfortunately, has lived with houselessness since. And knowing colleagues and friends that work in, you know, with Montana Legal Services and the lack of pro bono resources that are available to us in the community, this is a great opportunity for us, and housing stability really needs to be a great focus for us as a community in terms of anti-displacement methodology because we can't produce homes fast enough. We need to keep people in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in chambers that would like to provide public comment on this grant opportunity? And we don't have anyone, one person online, if the person online wants to provide public comment, please raise your hand, which, that is star five if you want to press that. Okay. Any further questions or comments from council? Ms. Vasika?
Yeah, to answer Mr. Moore's question, it looks like on the slideshow it was $1 million MRA project alignment to housing policy, and if Ms. Harris Shears wants to correct me if I'm wrong on that. She's nodding her head. All right. Yeah, if you don't mind, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Moore, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the funding resolution that helped establish the Affordable Housing Trust Fund identified that oftentimes the investments that are being made through the Missoula Redevelopment Agency align with the work that's outlined in A Place to Call Home. And so there is a commitment in the resolution that at least $1 million per year are aligned to the housing policies that are in A Place to Call Home or in our work plan in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That has always been exceeded in the time that we've been working with MRA, but that is part of the leverage we're planning to use.
I appreciate that follow-up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, any other comments or questions from council? Ms. Becerra?
Thank you. Emily, I'm looking at the eligibility for some of these funds, and I see that the Metropolitan Planning Organization could be one of them. I'm just wondering if there's a transportation component that could be used to alleviate some of the expenses that a lot of times people have, and how transportation cost is one of the issues in being able to afford a home in Missoula.
Yes, thank you. We did speak with Erin Wilson and staff at the NPO, and we did discuss some potential opportunities, but they weren't ready for the application. So we know that if we're awarded, we'll have the opportunity to do, to request a substantial amendment if we choose to do that. That would be another public comment period and another point for the public to engage in that conversation. As I understand, the NPO is updating their transportation plan, and so we may find out about these funding opportunities sort of in the right timing, but we chose not to use money for directing it to the transportation plan just from a priority perspective of being able to put as much money back into the community to preserve and build housing.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
I have a comment, Madam Chair, if that's okay? Yep. All right. Well, I just want to thank staff and voice my support in this. We have some really great grant writers on staff, and we have been able to kind of get some of these stretch grants for a lot of the good work, and I do appreciate the comments that were made by the public about the work that we've done up until this point in time has led us to be even more competitive for these grants. And we need to continue to think outside the box for other ways to, you know, solve some of these really big systemic problems, and this is a great opportunity to leverage some federal dollars. But it wouldn't be possible without the work that we are doing on the ground and the work that we've done and the partnerships that we have built in the nonprofit sector as well as with MRA. We can go round and round about that. But it is a tool in our toolbox that we are trying to use, and it is going to take every tool we have and some really creative thinking to tackle some of these big problems, and this is a good first step. I have to do grant writing in my day job, and it is an incredibly complex task to demonstrate a need and tell the story and make it all into a very compelling narrative that people who may not know where Missoula, Montana on a map is and what the amazing groups that we have on the ground are and the ability for them to actually do big things with just, you know-- you know, leveraging a little bit of money or, in this case, a lot of money and have really a monumental impact. So hats off to staff for that. Thank you to the community members for your partnership. We all have a part to play in this, and us around council supporting this is our part. And I'm really excited and fingers crossed.
Great, thank you. I will just add, thank you to folks who came down tonight to comment on this. This public hearing process component is important for the grant to show that there is attention being paid to this and that the community has had information regarding it, outreach has been done, and we've had input. So thank you for coming down and for your comments tonight. I also just want to say I think this council is very supportive of this grant. We are constantly looking for ways to fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and outside of our general fund. So to have this opportunity could just have huge impact in Missoula. So I'm very appreciative of the work you've done to create the foundation to send in a solid application. Anyone else from council? All right, then, we will close this public hearing. Thank you, everyone. And Emily, good luck. Bring home the bacon, okay? Can do it. All right, thank you for that. We will go on to-- we've got two more items for tonight. The first is under Committee Reports. We in the Budget and Finance Committee heard the Rule Four Amendment. I will go to staff first. Mr. Sudbury, I believe you're on the line as city attorney. This ultimately turned into a huge collaborative effort, so I don't know if there's any additional information you wanted to share, Mr. Sudbury, but I'll just go to you first.
I don't think I leave anything out, but I can certainly answer questions if anybody has any.
Okay, thank you. And following our format here, any questions from council before we hear a motion on this item? Then Ms. Anderson, I will go to you for the motion, please.
Thanks so much. Oh, God, change the page here real quick, sorry. So I make the recommended motion to adopt the amendments to the Missoula City Council Rule for-- Rule Four entitled decorum at meetings to come in. And this is a part of our efforts to have productive meetings and come into compliance with some recent decisions in the Ninth Circuit, especially citing Acosta v. the City of Costa Mesa. And I'm happy to comment when the time is right, Madam Chair.
Okay. And just so that we're all on the same page, this motion includes the language that Ms. West and Ms. Vasika agreed upon. Ms. Vasika, do you want to clarify that?
Yes, it was taken as a friendly amendment from Daniel and I. The one, two, fourth paragraph, I emailed it to Marty, Stacy, Gwen, and Daniel. I should have just done all council, sorry about that. So the fourth paragraph where it says, "The ability of city to conduct its business speakers are asked to refrain from"-- we are changing the word speakers to attendees. And that is a friendly amendment. So that is the new motion on the floor.
Great. So that was all of the current language. Up until the beginning of the meeting was in the motion that I just moved. So I think that incorporates all of that.
Just want to make sure we're all on the same page. All right, so that motion is in order. Do we have any public comment on this motion? And I'm not seeing any raised hands, so we will go to council comments. Ms. Vasika.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all of my colleagues for hearing this from me once again. I have been very frustrated with the Rule Four change that happened, I think in 2021, so it's been about three years, that when late Mayor Engen said, "Would you like to continue beating this dead horse?" And I said, "Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would love to continue beating this dead horse." But I'm really happy that we were able to come to a compromise with everybody and have language that is comfortable with everybody, including attendees, my fellow councilors, and the interim mayor. I actually don't know what his thoughts on-- he wasn't here. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I really do hope that this passes tonight as it did on Wednesday. And thank you, everybody, for being willing to have that conversation with Daniel and I.
Thanks. Anyone else? Any other comments from council? Daniel, and then Ms. Anderson.
Yeah, I think this change is a step in the right direction and strikes a fair balance between running orderly meetings here and still allowing freedom of speech and making sure that there's room in council chambers for people with all varying opinions to come to council and speak their mind to their local government and to the community as a whole. So I think this takes us a step in the right direction to make sure that we can preserve a good democracy here and make sure that everybody has the right to speak some truth to power in this building. So I appreciate the support and like to continue these conversations in the future.
Ms. Anderson?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Yes, I'll thank my colleagues for the work on this. I will especially thank city attorney Ryan Sudbury for the work that he has done to craft it to a point where I think that the majority of us on council can support this. You know, obviously a fan of the First Amendment and free speech, but also want to make sure that everyone who comes to council chambers feels as though they're on equal footing and that their voice is heard and they have an opportunity despite if they are agreeing with us or disagreeing or agreeing or disagreeing with a speaker and that we create a respectful environment that welcomes all because that is how we have an inclusive, fair, representative democracy. You know, I was literally had the rules pulled up in front of me when I was making my point of order comment earlier today because I was like, yep, it's in there. Because, you know, it-- there are a lot of our issues that we deal with that are at the core of people's well-being and their livelihoods, and they get very passionate about that and absolutely understandable. But, you know, keeping a level of decorum and professionalism, be it a very broad definition of that, I think, you know, makes it for a safe place for all and a welcoming place for all. And so whether you agree or disagree, we want you to come down and voice your opinion and feel free to do so. Just follow the rules and address the chair and all the other parts of that. But thanks to everyone for their hard work and thanks to everyone coming down and those who follow the rules, we appreciate you and like to continue to have you join us. So, thanks.
Any other comments from council? Mr. Nugent?
Yeah, thanks. I think these changes are good. I do want to stress, and I've said this a couple of times, that it's got brought up that we need to play the process out. And when somebody does call point of order, there's a process for it. And I think that that's part of the conversation because I do find some irony in some of the people who often complain about not being able to speak do it when they are talking to us as a council body. And I think that's the ultimate ability to address your government is to come give public comment. So I appreciate all the efforts that's gone into this. I think it's a good clean cleanup, but I do think that's worth mentioning, too. And I will say that when Ms. Anderson said she appreciated people who followed the rules, she was looking in this direction. So I can only assume that's me and Ms. West.
Any other comments from council? I will just close by saying that I think the rule is clear now. It's, as our city clerk pointed out a couple months ago, we had buried the lead at the end of the rule, and the lead on this is the fact that we don't want to-- we don't want meetings to be disrupted. When free speech goes so far as to disrupt the meeting, then it's stepped over lines. And so we want people to absolutely be able to say their thoughts in front of us, but in such a way that they're reasonable sideboard so that everyone feels comfortable in this chambers and feels comfortable to continue to come down and provide comment. And I feel like this rule emphasizes that disrupting the meeting is the line we don't want people to cross, and it also clearly signals potential ways in which they could disrupt the meeting. So it helps to communicate what does and doesn't work and gives us better tools to try and, how should I say, steer the comment to keep it in an area where it's not disrupting the meeting. And that's what we've done in the past, but I think this is just much clearer. We usually just try and have people bring it back to the middle a little bit, just tell us what they want us to know, but not overstep boundaries. So thanks, everyone, for the collaborative work on this. I appreciate it. We've had public comment, we had council comments, so we will have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, on the amendment to City Council Rule Number Four, Carlino.
Yes.
Kantoz.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Vasika.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra.
Yes.
And would any of you like to change your vote? Seeing none, that is twelve eyes, passes, unanimous. Thanks.
Thank you. The last thing on our agenda tonight is under new business. We have an item to postpone final consideration on an ordinance amending Missoula Municipal Code Chapter 12.40 regarding overnight camping in city public spaces and postponing that until December 11th. And we don't have staff on this, but Ms. Anderson, did you want to speak to that? And then we'll see if there's any questions from council and then take a motion.
Yeah, thanks so much, Madam Chair. This is not meant to leave anybody in limbo. This is meant to give us time to continue to have collaborative conversations with stakeholders, staff, attorneys, and making sure that we can thread this needle to make it so that it is compliant and enforceable and, you know, addresses some of the challenges that we are facing. So we just need a little bit more time on this to continue to incorporate stakeholder feedback, and that's pretty straightforward, just--
Any questions? Then I would look to Ms. Anderson. You are the only person making motions tonight, Ms. Anderson.
Apparently. Gosh, you know, God, glad I put some, like, makeup on. Okay, so the motion I am making is to postpone final consideration of the ordinance amending Missou-- oh, gosh, Missoula Municipal Code Chapter 12.40 regarding overnight camping in city public spaces until Monday, December 11th, 2023, which I also think is the night we're doing ugly Christmas sweaters.
Oh, well, we'll see about--
Okay, okay.
All right. Any public comment on this motion? I don't see anyone online, any comment from council. All right, we will have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, on the motion to postpone consideration, Kantoz.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Vasika.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra.
Yes.
And Carlino.
Yes.
And would any of you like to change your votes? That is twelve eyes, and it passes.
Thank you. I will pass on communications from the mayor. For communications from city council members, I will start with Ms. Farmer.
Yeah, thanks. I'll just remind everyone it's Halloween and there's going to be lots of little kids and big kids in costumes, and it's going to be dark and to just be extra safe when you're driving around.
Thank you, Ms. Savage.
I'll pass, thank you.
Ms. Becerra?
I'll pass, thank you.
Mr. Kantoz?
Yes, I got the privilege of spending the day with my two-year-old grandson today. What a blast that was. And, you know, it made me realize how important it is to spend time with these little guys. I think not just as a grandparent, but as a parent. Because as I get older, I see how much love goes into a child and the outcome later on. And, you know, I just could not say enough about spending time with your kids. It's that important.
Thank you, Ms. Vasika.
Thanks. I was actually raking with my two-and-a-half-year-old today, and we did not get much done, but he had a blast. I kind of wanted to-- that's a good segue. I was-- you hear a lot about the U.S. national debt and how much we owe China, and so I started looking into it. And turns out that we actually owe Japan more than we owe China, but we actually owe ourselves more than we owe all of the above because we have over $6 trillion in federal government debt to our own trust funds. And these are accounts that are dedicated to Social Security, Medicare, and other entitlement programs. That's $6 trillion that we are borrowing from ourselves with a big IOU. And just to clarify even more, so we owe a lot of countries a lot of debt. We owe, what is it, $6 trillion to ourselves, $1.1 trillion to Japan, $859.4 billion to China, about $660 billion to UK, $330 billion to Belgium, $318 billion to Luxembourg, and so on. And so the reason why I'm saying this is that with the latest U.S. Census as of October 16th, 2023, the U.S. Treasury's official figure for the debt of the federal government is $33.6 trillion. And that is $195,095 for every person living in the U.S. That includes my two-and-a-half-year-old son. So he's barely in this life, and he already owes over $100,000 in debt. Think about that when, on a more local level, when we are doing our budgets, when we're thinking about programs, when we're thinking about studies, when we're thinking about what we are going to do. Think about what that debt is doing to our community, doing to our families, and doing to our children. Because as a person who is rarely in debt, I can't even imagine having $100,000 in debt, let alone for something that I didn't even get to enjoy. So I just wanted to let my colleagues know, future councils know, everybody in U.S. government, everybody in America and the world know that debt does have consequences. So please keep that in mind if it's something that you want right now, if you're willing to be okay with the consequences that it has later. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Oh, gosh, okay. Well, lots of thoughts on that. I'm very much, very far in debt because I own a home. And so on paper, it looks like I'm a mess, but in the future, that will be a good thing because I will hopefully have paid it off. So debt is not always-- it's not always as it seems. But that's not actually what my comments were. But I would like to, first of all, call out and just put it on the record that hate does not have a place in Missoula. And I was really upset by the fact that folks felt the need to stand in front of our local synagogue and continue to spew hatred and antisemitism, and that's just not okay. Yes, they have a First Amendment right to do so, and I have a First Amendment right to say that is not a Missoula value. It's not a Montana value. You know, we are a country of immigrants, and as a history major, if we don't learn our history, we are bound to repeat it. So I appreciate the folks who came out on that day and peacefully counter-protest and showed what Missoula's values actually were and were doing that in a peaceful manner. I appreciate the Missoula Police Department for monitoring the situation and would continue to ask the community to stand up for those against people who want to, you know, bring hate and fear to our community. That is just, there is no place for that here. And, you know, there are lots of really, you know, thoughtful conversations happening about what is happening in the Middle East, and it is a complex issue that is older, it's decades old, and you can, depending on how far you want to go back, and, you know, the oldest time. But hate is not a Missoula value. So just wanted to take this opportunity and this platform to say that publicly. And, you know, I, you know, for any folks who, you know, felt a little less welcome in Missoula that day or a little scared to call Missoula home, I am very sorry that you had to go through that and know that you are appreciated. And for all of the diverseness that Missoula has, it is a blessing and one of the great things about our community. Just wanted to say that. And then, Mr.-- well, I appreciate the comments about tourist tax because that is something I have spent a lot of time talking about in my various campaigns. And I love to use the example of Whitefish, Montana. I grew up in the Flathead Valley and grew up in Kalispell, but Whitefish-- I grew up in the Flathead Valley and grew up in Kalispell, but Whitefish was just right down the road. And their voters elected to impose a 3% sales tax upon themselves for things like retail sales and lodging, restaurants, prepared food, alcoholic beverages, ski resort goods and services, defined luxury items. And of that revenue, 65% of it goes to fixing streets, storm waters, underground utilities, sidewalks. 25% of that revenue goes into property tax reductions. Love to have that conversation with the voters of Missoula, but we are not allowed to because of the state legislature. And I think we need to figure out ways to diversify our income stream. And something like this has worked very well for the community of Whitefish and all of the folks who are homeowners there really appreciate seeing that rebate on their property taxes every year. And yet there are good things happening and infrastructure being built because it is a community that has figured out a way to try to tax its tourism as a way to be an economic driver. So just wanted to point that out and then I will be done. Thank you so much.
Ms. Cheryl?
Thanks. I just want to remind everyone that our post office is understaffed and our ballots went out last, I don't know, last, last week, Wednesday, Stacy says. And so just make sure you get your ballots back in plenty of time or you drop them off at the county elections office.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
I'll pass. Thanks.
Mr. Carlino? Ms. West?
The post office is understaffed. I just checked in on my husband to see if he made it home to make dinner yet and he is still delivering mail. But that is not what I wanted to comment about either. I wanted to remind everyone that the youth cannabis open house is tomorrow at CS Porter from 6:30 to 8:30. So if you're interested in seeing what the trends are among our youth in Missoula related to cannabis use, that would be an opportunity to go learn more. I plan on going and hopefully some other folks I know will be there as well.
Thank you. Mr. Nugent?
Thank you. I won't echo everything Ms. Anderson said, but I, I think she made some great points. And, you know, hate doesn't have a place anywhere, anywhere. But as a community, we're always stronger and more diverse when we celebrate what makes us unique. And over the weekend, I think that what we, what we see sometimes is an act of cowardice, for lack of a better word, and people wearing masks and telling us who to be afraid of is the exact opposite of what they're trying to portray. And I think that it's important for us as a community to make it known that we stand with, you know, everybody in our community and against that fear and against that hate, any sort of antisemitism and racism, because we're all stronger together. And I just echo the comments my counsel, my, my colleague, Ms. Anderson made.
Thank you. We have no miscellaneous communications, reports, or announcements, and that is the end of our agenda. So thank everyone for your service and thank you to everyone for coming down tonight and we will stand adjourned.